At this time, I'd like to call the February 24th, 2022 regular meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education to order. This time, Dr. Banks, would you lead us on the pledge, Lee?
I'll stand. I pledge the name to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our invocation, Pastor Glenn Foster from Harpness Time Church. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very short and very brief. Years ago, a man by the name of Hudson Taylor, born and raised in England, was asked by a missionary society if he would pray and go to China and be one of their missionaries, and that they would, if he would go, that they would financially support him. So he prayed and he went to China. And two months after he's over there, that organization ceases to exist, crumbles. So he finds himself with no human assistance in China, alone, just God and him. Yet by the time he died, he left not one church, but he left 268 churches. And he made this statement, "God's work, then God's way will never lack, God's supply." Let's pray. Father, I thank you. Your word says in James chapter one that if any lack of wisdom, let them ask of you, and you give liberally, Father. There are decisions before this group tonight, Father, and we're asking for your counsel, your wisdom, in all of them, Father. And Father, we ask that you do this tonight, and all the decisions, Father, that they would all be done and made and discussed peacefully, Father. Father, we ask that you do all this in such a way that it has to be confessed that you are the one that answered this prayer tonight, Father, and it was not man. Father, we give you all the praise, the honor, and the glory in Jesus' mighty name, and amen.
Amen. I figured it out. If you want a more of this coffee.
I love coffee.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank all of y'all.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And for those of y'all that were here earlier when Dr. Banks gave his invocation for us at the work session, it's always impressive to me that men of the Lord can inspire you, even with different energies, regardless. So I appreciate you earlier, Dr. Banks. I still kind of jacked up on that. But that's all good. I appreciate everyone being here tonight at this time. Board members, asking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda you have in front of you. Motion by Mr. Wade, second. Second by Mr. Jowers. Any discussion on the agenda? Notice, we did add the number eight Community Development Block Grant for Head Start as a line item. Got a motion in the second. No discussion. All in favor? All right. Dr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We've got a nice crowd, and we're excited to have everybody here and do the business of the school district. Our mission is destination graduation for college career and life. And as we're in the month of February, I can't help but think about Black History Month and how important it is for us to celebrate Black History Month all month long, and then especially tonight, here at our Board of Education office. And I went to the high school today, and they had a beautiful program at the high school with the show choir singing and had the drama department putting on some skits and various short presentations during the Black History Month, and had the entire New Performing Arts Center full of students celebrating together this special month. So it was just good to be amongst the students and see them smiling and having fun together. So, and that's what it's all about, all of us together regardless of what color or creed or anything like that. So I did want to recognize the month of February as Black History Month. Vision, creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. And that's our vision as a school system, and that's our work, is to create a stronger community through education and an excellent education. We want to do the best and provide the best that we can possibly provide for all of our students. So we'll continue with our meeting. And first up, we have Governance and Leadership Special Recognition School Counselors Week.
Thank you, Dr. Lee, board members. I'm honored to recognize this special group of employees we have in our school system. And I don't mean to copy what you said, Mr. Preston, but ever since I listened to Dr. Banks' prayer, I was thinking about this group of individuals because they work so closely with our students who is in need. So it was February 7th through the 11th, we recognized our counselors in our schools. We know they wear many hats, especially during COVID, this past year and a half. They are caregivers for the students. Many of the schools have clothes closets, food banks. They provide for these students, their needs. But they also work with them as far as their goals and what they want to do when they graduate from high school, just like destination graduation or college career in life. We start at the elementary level with career fairs and talking to students, and it goes all the way up to the high school. But these individuals are an integral part of that, so we wanted to recognize them tonight. Starting at Ambrose Elementary, Anna Harris. Anna's been with us for 14 years at Ambrose Elementary. Rockston, Katrina Paul. Katrina worked for 13 years with the Department of Juvenile Justice before she came to work for us, and she's been with us for six years. Heidi Welch at Indian Creek, at Eastside Elementary. Heidi was a teacher for five years, and she's been a counselor for 14. She's always smiling, you see, Heidi. At Indian Creek Elementary, we have a new counselor, Izzy Burnham. Izzy came to us from the Unison Behavioral Health Center, so this is her first year in public school, excuse me, but she is a licensed counselor. Nichols Elementary, Jennifer Littlecox. This is Jennifer's 18th year at Nichols Elementary. Satella Elementary, Ms. Shirley Graham. This is her first year as a counselor, but she worked with us as a student support case manager previously. West Green Elementary, Rebecca James. She's completing her sixth year with us. At Westside Elementary, Lisa Spivey. Before she came to us, she was an instructor at, which is now Wiregrass, but when it was East Central Tech, and this is her 22nd year in counseling. Coffee Middle School, we have three counselors, Austin Lee, Jill Pruitt, and Brooke Runker. Austin started out as a teacher in the classroom and then went back to school and got her degree as a school counselor. This is her third year as a counselor. Jill Pruitt taught for nine years and is completing 29 years as a counselor. Brooke Runker, this is her second year with us. She came from Unison Behavioral Health. George Washington Carver, we have Jessica Williams. This is her first year. She was a student support case manager, but she has experience in the private sector, and she's doing an excellent job on the freshman campus. Coffee High School, I want to start by saying we have four counselors out there, and with our new pathways, our career academies, they each are housed on a wing. So Jennifer Day, there to the left, she's the Public Service and Education Counselor. Ginger Hughes to the right is Health and Human Services. I will say Jennifer started as a teacher for five years and then earned her master's in counseling, so this is her third year. Ginger has been a counselor for 19 years. Rachel Poe on the left, she is in the Academy of Engineering, Agriculture, and Mechanics. She was a teacher for six years, and this is her 10th year as a counselor. To the right is James Louden. He taught for one year, and this is his third year as a counselor. And at Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy, Annette Nation. Annette was a career planner at East Central Tech before she went to South Georgia College for seven years as a counselor. She was a social worker for two years and came back to us. This is her 13th year with us as a school counselor. We appreciate all that these men and women do for our students, and I can't imagine our system without them. So thank you for all that you do, counselors.
And I do have to brag on our counselors with the crisis intervention. If we have a tragedy in the system, something terrible that happens, our counselors, I see Dr. Johnson back there, the special services, thank y'all, Dr. Johnson, for what y'all do with the crisis intervention that we have, and that involves all of our counselors. Our counselors will come together and go to the school and work with students. And so, as I cited earlier, in the work session, how impressed I am with our network and the way our computer systems operate, they're highly reliable for our school system. I think our counselors and the systems, Dr. Johnson's job put in place for crisis intervention is phenomenal, really is. It's the best I've seen in the districts I've worked in, so I appreciate what our counselors do. All right. Next recognition is the REACH Scholars, and we have Dr. Johnson here with us to present the REACH Scholars.
And good evening, Dr. Lee, the board. Tonight, I'd just like to present to you our 2021-2022 REACH Georgia Scholars. For those of you who may not know, REACH stands for Realizing Educational Achievement Can Happen. And this initiative was started by Governor Nathanville in 2012, and we here in Coffee County started it in 2014. It's a needs-based scholarship program that is supported by mentorship as well as academic coaches. Students are identified in the eighth grade. We look at their academics, their behavior, and their attendance, and we look at that to, as far as their selection. As you see, the mission of the REACH program is to ensure that Georgia's low-income, academically promising students have the academic, social, and financial support that's needed to graduate from high school and be able to access college and in post-secondary institutions in the state of Georgia. So there are currently, you know, with the 180 school systems within the state of Georgia that are serving more than 3,000 students. The beauty of this program is that once the students complete their high school career, they are able to receive a $10,000 scholarship to help them in post-secondary institutions in the state of Georgia. So this is an excellent program, and I encourage you, I'm just going to do a plug, if you would like to mentor a student, you're welcome to reach out to me. I do have applications for that, and I do have some for me tonight. So you have to go through a background check, and there is a training program that you also need to go through. But I do want to do a plug for that, as very beautiful. I would like to introduce our scholars for the 2021-22 school year, and they are, beginning with Ms. Jayla Call. She is an eighth grade student. She's very proud of passing all of her classes. Jayla enjoys deer and hog hunting. She also enjoys mud bogging. It is reported that Jayla is a hard worker, responsible, and very knowledgeable, and has a heart for others and works well with others. Her parents are Mr. Dwayne Davis and Mrs. Sonia Davis. Jayla's parents report that the REACH Scholarship will give her the opportunity to become a veteran, Ms. Jayla Call. Haley Driver. She's an eighth grade student who previously received an award for honor roll and perfect attendance. She enjoys playing basketball and spending time with her family. Haley aspires to attend a historically black college/university and major in business. It is reported that Haley is very kind-hearted, respectful, and works well with others. Her parents are Ms. Lakely Oliver and grandmother, Ms. Carolyn Oliver. Our next scholar, George English. He's an eighth grade student who has previously received awards for honor roll and perfect attendance. He is proud of getting good grades and being a good student. George also enjoys making music. He aspires to attend the University of Central Florida and study music. It is reported that George is very motivated, trustworthy, and respectful. His parents, Ms. Jocelyn Johnson and Mr. Terrence English. Ms. Johnson states that this program will benefit George in pursuing his dream. I feel that this will be a big opportunity for his future. George English. Lazarone Borges Hernandez, a student. He reports that he is very proud of being able to speak English and Spanish and help his mother and others translate. He states that he wants to attend college to become a financial advisor. It is reported that Lazarone is respectful, trustworthy, and well-mannered. His parents, Mr. Isbell Borges and Ms. Yannette Hernandez. Lazarone's parents report that the REACH Scholarship would help him reach his goals and become successful in life. Zaraya Mackey. She's an eighth grade student who previously received the Citizenship Award. She is proud of making good grades and reaching her goals that she has set for herself. Zaraya aspires to attend Georgia State University to major in business or in the medical field. It is reported that Zaraya is very respectful, helpful, honest, and attentive. Her parents, Ms. Jalisa Sutton, and stepmother, Ms. Shanita Sutton. Ms. Sutton states that the REACH Scholarship will provide Zaraya with the opportunity to do, attend college, and bring smiles wherever she goes because she gives everyone the utmost Chevy Palmer. He's an eighth grade student who previously received the highest math score on the GMOS. He is proud of getting good grades and enjoys playing soccer. He would like to attend college to make a better life for himself. It is reported that Chevy is courteous, attentive, friendly, and helpful. His parents are Ms. Kebra Carter and Mr. Christopher Palmer. Peyton Taylor. He's an eighth grade student who previously received an award for reading and for perfect attendance for eight years and is currently working on year nine for perfect attendance. He enjoys karate and playing tennis. Peyton aspires to attend South Georgia College and hopes on working for the GBI. It is reported that Peyton is a hard worker, dedicated, kind, and humble. His parents are Ms. Kendra Taylor. Ms. Taylor stated that the REACH Scholarship would help Peyton financially and that he is well-mannered and tries his best. And lastly, Ms. Alaria Thomas. She's an eighth grade student who previously received awards for honor roll and perfect attendance. She enjoys singing in the show choir and is proud of exceeding her length-size scores. Alaria aspires to attend Harvard or Princeton to study law or become a plastic surgeon. It is reported that Alaria is outgoing, caring, self-motivated, and helpful. Her parents, Ms. Veronica Rockwell, and stepfather, Antonio Jones. Ms. Rockwell states that the REACH Scholarship will give her the opportunity to attend college so that she can have a better future. And these are our 2021-2022 REACH Scholars, and we would like to thank our sponsors, Hurst &amp; Hurst, Almatel Telephone Company, and the Premium Peanut for their support in sponsoring these scholars.
Just real quickly, I know we usually have only five a year. We've got 10. Do they expand the program?
We did have some replacements this year.
Okay.
Due to some maybe not meeting their commitment.
Right.
And so we've had some additions.
Okay, okay. And I don't know, we didn't really explain how the REACH Scholarship is funded. Anybody, an individual, business, $1,500 commitment. Is it every year that the child's in this program, or is it just the one time?
It's a one-time commitment as far as sponsorship, and actually, the sponsorship has dropped to 1,000, actually.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So if anyone would like to do a sponsorship of $1,000, we will be identifying another group of scholars in the fall, so we welcome those sponsorships.
Okay. And what that turns into is?
A $10,000 scholarship.
$10,000 scholarship through the REACH program, but often the college campuses, at least within the state, will batch that.
Some colleges.
Sometimes, not all the time, but sometimes they will. Quite an opportunity for a $1,000 investment if you're tuned in and looking for something to do for the kids.
Yes, sir.
Great program.
Public-private partnership. I know Mr. Rob Hurst, I think he's contributed every year since it started, if we needed a contributor. Sometimes there's been others who had already contributed, but there's several people who really believe in giving to this so that the child gets a $10,000 scholarship. So thank you, Dr. Johnson. Also, this is one of those things that kind of other duties is assigned, and you've done an excellent job with it. I appreciate what you do with the REACH Scholarship.
And we do thank our counselors because they are ones that serve as our academic coaches and supporting our students. And thank you to our mentors and just everyone that's involved in supporting the program.
Is the, my recollection of the program, and it may have changed since the last time, because I wouldn't have realized that the amount had dropped, but these students are students who are probably going to be the first in their family to attend post-secondary school or college.
Oftentimes they are.
Oftentimes.
That's what we aspire to do as far as this selection process.
But that's not a requirement, but that is something we look for. Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and you will see the items that we discussed in the work session prior to this meeting. We have the minutes from the January meeting, and we also have the minutes from the November 18 meeting that we are mending to reflect the increased grant amount, that the grant increased. So for all the team purposes, we want to make sure that those minutes reflect that increased amount. Monthly financial report. We review the financials in the work session, and the system is physically healthy and in a good position. HVAC replacement, Ambrose and Indian Creek. We are asking the board to approve tonight the low bid on the HVAC replacement at Ambrose and Indian Creek, and the low bid was Stalby HVAC, which is a local company. So we're asking the board to approve those bids tonight. Site application approval for construction of the NJROTC multi-purpose facility at Coffee High School, and then also a new West Green school, basically. We will keep the newer wings that had just been built, the new gym that was built, but replace all of the older parts of West Green Elementary. So it'll essentially be a new school, West Green. And so by approving these site applications, the State Department will give us the green light to go ahead and do these construction projects. E-Rate firewall. This is a technology piece that's needed for the system, and it's funded partially through E-Rate. The majority of the funding is through E-Rate. CARES II Chromebook purchase. This is also using the CARES, American Recovery Act funding, CARES II Chromebook purchase, over 400 Chromebooks. And then E-Rate, WAN, and Internet. This is a combined bid for E-Rate, WAN, and Internet. E-Rate core switch upgrades. This is a switch that's required to keep our system operating as it should. And then public review of revision policy, GARA. This will open this up to public review. This would remove the 45-day cap on the number of days that our employees who are on public school retirement would be able to be paid when they retire or they leave the system after 10 years. So this will be a benefit for our employees who are on public school retirement, not TRS, but public school. And then we have the school calendar. We are asking the board to approve Calendar Draft 1A1. That was the one that received the most likes from the staff. Overwhelmingly, they chose Calendar 1, so we're asking the board to approve that tonight.
The motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion, will you permit the son of Jim, Mr. Wade?
Second. Second by Mrs. Johnson. Any discussion? Appreciate everyone's work earlier. All in favor? Thank you.
Community Development Block Grant. We had a presentation from the group that funds Head Start, manages Head Start locally, and the city of Douglas has applied for a community development block grant, and they've asked us for a commitment to participate as a partner with the county and city and school board and Head Start to fund this project. They did ask for a commitment from the school board. What we discussed in our work session was pledging, committing $100,000 to the construction of the facility, and then $50,000 to the contingency. And whatever contingency, up to $50,000, that is not used on the project would be returned to the school board.
Members, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion that we fund the community fairs Head Start program building, $100,000 toward construction, and then $50,000 to their budget item for the contingency fee with the possibility that we return up to that $50,000 if there is money left in the contingency fee at the end of the project. Any motion? Ms. Johnson?
I'll share.
Second, Mr. Wade. Any further discussion? This will be played out as FLOS funding.
Yes, sir.
This time, ask for a vote. All in favor? Any votes? Motion passes? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
All right, executive session. I do ask for an executive session to discuss personnel.
Just real quickly, we didn't spend a lot of time on this. We did the work session. This is the Head Start, I mean, yeah, the Head Start Building on Pine Street in Gaskin that's got the old kitchen, that's got, water gets in there, and that old building, that outbuilding, outbuilding's going to be removed, and there'll be a new addition, new kitchen facility, and there's four classrooms. It'll be adding.
Two, I think, and possibly one. One public room is used.
Okay, okay. So we're adding capacity to the Head Start.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, executive session for personnel and the hiring or the employment or disinteraction or evaluation of employee, and then also real estate.
Get motion to exit executive session. All right, that's motion, Mr. Wade. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All in discussion? All in favor? We'll be right back. Get a motion to exit executive session.
That's our move.
Ms. Johnson? Second by Mr. Jowers. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. We've got several personnel documents I'm going to ask the board to approve. And, uh... First off is the personnel list, the annual personnel list of certified recommendations. And this is the list that includes all 593 employees, certified employees, who have been recommended by their principal or their director who oversees their employment. And so we're going to recommend back everybody on this list, and we are going to pull the individuals who are related directly to our board members. So that's why we have to do individual vote for some of them. So at this time, I would ask the board to approve the personnel list, the certified recommendations, but pull number 410, 265, number 79.
Right. I need a motion based on the police's resignation. Mr. Wade? Second, Mr. Locke. Any discussion? Certified personnel list. All in favor?
All right, I would ask the board to approve number 410.
Need a motion to approve number 410.
Need a motion to approve number 410.
Mr. Locke, Mr. Wade. Any discussion? I'll be abstaining from this vote. All in favor?
I would ask the board to approve number 265.
Need a motion to approve number 265.
Second. Mr. Wade? Thank Mr. Jowers. All in, any discussion on 265? Just for you guys. All in favor?
And then I would ask the board to approve number 79.
Motion to approve number 79.
Mr. Locke? Mr. Jowers? Thanks, sir. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Now we have the Coffee County School System Administrative Recommendations, 1 through 44. No reason to pull anybody.
Need a motion to accept the administrative recommendations for next school year. Ms. Johnson? Mr. Wade? Any discussion? All in favor?
And then I would ask the board to approve, I'm going to pull number one, and we'll vote that one separately, but to approve the personnel list as presented without number one.
And this for the, yeah, I'm sorry. Make a motion for the monthly, uh...
The monthly list.
List, which includes certified, classified, also resignations and terminations.
Make the motion.
All right, with the exception of number one. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
All right. And I would ask the board to approve number one.
Need a motion? Mr. Wade? Second, Mr. Locke. Any discussion? We hashed it out. All in favor? Any votes?
Great, all right. Thank y'all. That takes care of our personnel, and we will move on to the next part of the meeting, which is the adjournment of the meeting.
Yeah, this time I'll adjourn.
All right. And now we will have our public participation. And we have one person who has signed up for public participation, Tabitha Paul. And she says her topics are student and teacher conduct, community and stakeholder involvement, redistricting, community and school transparency, and leadership accountability. So, Ms. Paul? All right. And we have Mr. Michael Newton with us. And you have five minutes, and I do want to point out that as provided in such board policy, each individual will be given five minutes to address the board, and if there are numerous requests to address the board on the same or similar subject, the chair may select representatives to speak on each side. And the public participation section of the board meeting will last no longer than 20 minutes. If someone has an issue, problem, or concern that can be resolved administratively, he or she should first contact superintendent or the superintendents designated in an effort to secure a satisfactory solution prior to seeking to address the board. The board will not hear oral complaints or criticism regarding school personnel during public meetings. Also, the board may refuse to hear persons who approved slip peers before the board and presented issues which have been addressed. Yes, sir.
First of all, how do you have a meeting that you adjourn that's going to have records? So anything that I say after you adjourn is not part of your meeting?
On broadcast, sir.
I understand broadcast, but again, if you're adjourned a meeting, that means the meeting is over, but being on broadcast, the meeting is recorded going forward. Ms. says revision statement is creating a strong community through equitable and excellent education for every student. Being that so, we're trying to figure out what's going on with the school policy on investigation. On the issues that's going on at the school right now, what's the policy on investigating a staff member on conduct?
We'll take it under advisement?
Okay. Well, wasn't this person fired or instead allowed to resign? But Dr. Lee, we spoke with you on last year, myself, Dr. Logan, NAACP President, Tabitha Paul, Mrs. Lynn Smith, along with Randy Garrett, and also Dr. Cummings. None of you all were here. It was a private meeting, and we told you about the misappropriation, inappropriate sexual things that were going on with the coaching, with the school system. You assured us there was nothing going on. And now here we are, everything's coming out that we addressed to you about, and we talked to you about. The board doesn't know about this meeting, I guess, but we talked with you about it. So what do you have to say that now that it's coming out and now that it's there, we have kids that you said were supposed to be looked after and equaled or in excellent education, but they've been bothered by an adult supervisor, somebody that supervises them, that we brought all these issues to you last year?
I'll certainly consider what you said, but I...
I was saying we brought these issues to you last year. You said it was a witch hunt. You said that what we had wasn't concerning. And this person did this last year, and y'all covered it up last year.
I would say that you're making stuff up.
There was others here at the meeting with me, so I'm not making it up, sir. Next thing, the redistricting issue. I know we was at the board, I mean, at the county meeting, and so what was the risk? Because the NAACP president, they didn't get a chance to look at it. It was less than 24 hours we brought that topic up. We just want to readdress that again on the redistricting issue. When would they look at it, when we all discuss it with the public? You were at the meeting. I was, but the meeting was not done within a 24-hour notice. And so therefore, it's your job, not my job. And I'm not here to do your job, but I'm asking you about you doing your job.
Dr. Lee, at the meeting on February 7th, Chairman Preston had to leave, and Mr. Locke was, chaired the meeting, and after this complaint was...
Let me stop the timer for just a moment. Sir? He's going to take about two minutes. Appreciate you.
After, and Chairman Locke asked me, was it my opinion it was a legal meeting? And I told him it was, that's my legal opinion. My position, position there, position there, it was duly advertised.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought I was... No, that's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. And the open records request...
Excuse me, we're not stating names of personnel outside our policy. I want to go ahead and go on the record, too. That we were given, that we were given, you can stop the clock again. We were given notice, proper notice, timely notice, Ms. Paul, for you to address the board about certain issues, and we appreciate that. Our policy is that the person that's going to address the board is the one that signs up to address the board. So I'm just going to go on the record that this is irregular. I'm going to let it continue.
And I'm going to go on the record and to let you know, when I sent you the email, Dr. Lee, what did it say? Could you read it? Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, it did say that it may be you or it may be somebody else.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Lee.
Thank you. That's not the document that I was given. I appreciate that.
You're so welcome.
That's a lot of misinformation.
No, it's not. You know, I take, I take exception to that categorization.
No problem.
I was given a document that explained to me what our policy, was in our policy. So I was welcoming the address, that's all.
And I try to make sure I follow the policies of those teachers.
I understand, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with all of this being said, I know we're not mentioning names, but I was going to say, Dr. Lee, we're asking for your resignation because again, you knew the issue was...
Excuse me. Look, we're not, we're not, we're not going to talk about personnel matters and names in this open forum. No, sir.
Okay, we want to talk about names, but what we're talking about is kids that's going to have to deal with these issues, and there may be other children that come up that's going to have to deal with the misconception and the misappropriation of an adult that was supposed to be supervising them. And so this is things that kids are going to have to deal with. I heard about the counselors, one on each wing, but do we also know that now that you have to bring an advocacy counselor in to deal with all the students to go through and see who he has or hasn't dealt with in that mannerism? And so that's land on the county that looks bad on us as a community. But I understand you, Mr. Preston. You wasn't here when we talked about it, Dr. Lee, and I understand your frustration.
I'm not frustrated. What I am is going to hold to our policy about...
And I, and I respect that.
That you have.
And I respect that, but I got about 45 seconds because he stopped me. But Dr. Lee, those are the things that we did a little too because we had, this is privately, we did it privately, and you said it was a witch hunt. And so we're just here saying that, hey, now it's out, you see what we're talking about.
Let me ask you this, and I have a chance to rebut, but if you, if you're saying that you, you presented me with some of this information regarding a recent personnel issue, I would dispute that, Michael, and I appreciate you coming here and trying to express your opinions, but I'm not going to sit here and let you say publicly that I knew about some kind of personnel issue in which young people are involved, where they were being hurt or something of that nature, and you're going to come in here and say I did that? I'm going to tell you this, that you're lying.
That's fine.
All right.
That's fine. You have that right, and I accept that.
All right.
But I know we're... The principal, the athletic director at the time, we addressed those issues, and also the coach at the time, and the things that went on, and also some other things.
So I would, I would, your time is up, Mr. Newton, I appreciate it. I would say this, there is an act of an open investigation on one of your questions. If you have information that you feel like needs to be brought to those authorities, I encourage you to do so. But that investigation has been passed off to law enforcement almost immediately upon finding out the issue, and we are not self-investigating that issue.
Well, we do, we got an issue with a teacher and a football player that we're going to put in, and so we're letting the proper procedures go.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Apologize for misunderstanding, Ms. Paul. Yes, ma'am. All right?
All right. Yes, sir.
Any comments from the board members as we close out? You want me to start, Mr. Jowers?
Okay.
Okay. Now, I just want to tell you, everyone, how much we appreciate all the hard work that's going into getting back to school, getting back to the classroom normalcy that we can. I know it's been a tough year with the learning loss issues. I'm glad to see that we've hired the intervention specialists to get going. I am going to take this time to go ahead and announce that I do intend to run for my district 4C during the May election period. So just going to share that, and I appreciate the board's support while I still serve as GSBA president. Thank you.
All right.
Any other board members?
Yeah, I'm just going to announce, too, that I'll be running for my district 2 board seat in the election.
All right. All right. Well, I was going to say that thank you for all the staff. Thank you for the visitors. We appreciate y'all coming. And I do want to remind everybody that this is Black History Month, and we'll continue to celebrate throughout the end of the month, and then we'll head into March, that's right around the corner, and appreciate everybody and what they do. And I do need to announce that during the Teacher Job Fair will be coming up March 12th at 9:00 a.m. in New Forman Arts Center of Coffee High School. For more information, you may contact Kim Clayton at the Board of Education. And this has been a good meeting, and that's all.
Thank you.